Thank you all for coming. We will begin with the Vice Mayor Angela Williams with the opening prayer and then we will have to stand, please.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to gather as citizens of this great city. Lord bless this meeting. Bless all who are here in the homes that are represented. Bless our city. Bless each resident who resides within it and our city employees. This is our prayer in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the good public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for coming out tonight for this public hearing. In accordance with the results of the September referendum, the City Council next needs to establish the method of popularly-electing school board members. The City Council has delayed deliberating on this question in order to first hear from the public. Public hearings on this question have been scheduled to occur tonight. We've recently had one in Rutherford, Canada last week. The purpose of these public meetings is to give citizens an opportunity to speak on this important issue. After this meeting tonight is deducted, the Council will receive a written summary of relevant public comments and is scheduled to further discuss the decision and its informal portion of the City Council meeting at City Hall next Tuesday, December the 16th. If it is decided that the preferred school board election method is one that is not expressly permitted by the current enabling state statute, then the City will seek special legislation during the 2015 General Assembly. The 2015 General Assembly is scheduled to start January 14th, so Council will endeavor to select a method for electing the school board relatively quickly so that if special legislation is needed, it can be submitted in time. What that means is, the law permits us to decide whether we want a popular elected City Council at large or whether we can have one that follows the pattern of the present City Council, which is the board system. If we hear from the public and the Council decides that we should have a hybrid of those two, then we must decide that pretty quickly so that we can ask the General Assembly to pass special legislation. In order to get onto the time schedule for the General Assembly to get a bill in and to have the special legislation passed, that request has to be the General Assembly by the 1st of January. So if it is decided that some hybrids is going to be the way to move forward, then we have to decide that probably by next week. So that's why we're having these two public hearings quicker. We may not decide to go that route, but we wanted to make sure that we give the community an opportunity to weigh in on the issue. There are a number of you who signed up to speak tonight. What we'll do is when I call your name, if you'd please just come to the podium here, give us your full name for the record and your present home address, then we would like you to limit your remarks, please, to three minutes. All right? So thank you very much. The first speaker is Ricky Ross.
Good evening, Mayor Frame and City Manager Jones and distinguished members of the Norfolk City Council. I'm Ricky Ross, reside at 6830 Orangewood Avenue. I'm Treasurer of the Meadowbrook Wood Civic League, I'm immediate past President and correspondent and Secretary of the Norfolk Federation of Civic Leagues, and I'm a retired CTE teacher with 19 years of service with the Norfolk Public Schools. I'm honored to say that Norfolk residents are speaking with one voice to 17,000 citizens who signed the petition this past summer to place the referendum question on last month's ballot, and the over 85% who voted yes on November 4th are now anxious for the next phase of this process, elect at large or by wards. Former Governor Douglas Wilder signed into law in 1992 the process by which appointed school boards become elected school boards, and school board elections must coincide and be staggered like our City Council elections, so the earliest opportunity to elect school board members comes May 2016. And at current, we have seven board members, four of which current terms will expire June 30th of 2015, and three of which will expire June 30th of 2017. So elect at large, by wards, or even a hybrid version. In my opinion, with the short timing, we can remove the hybrid version from the table because it would be requiring even more time with further action from the General Assembly. And preferably, let's not have an exact copy of our current wards elections either. Therefore, I support the at-large elections so as provided by Virginia Code, so that at least three members would be elected in May 2016 to replace the three appointed members with terms to expire this coming June 30th of 2017, and the remaining four would be elected in May 2018 to replace the remaining four. I support this elective structure to allow for the best qualified people to serve on the school board, free from any partisanship, political ambition, or even ward affiliation to become school board candidates regardless of where they reside in the city of Norfolk, so as long as they remember why they serve and who they serve, and that is the students of the Norfolk Public Schools. I believe that we've long overlooked our human capital in the city of Norfolk. We have much untapped talent within our borders that we have never addressed since I can remember time and opportunity are presenting themselves. And I'd like to leave you with this quote from President Barack Obama, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for, and we are the change that we seek." Now, thank you for your time.
My name's Dennis Gronka, and I live at 1039 East Stationview Avenue here in Norfolk. I'm an electrical engineer, and I started the petition drive for the selected school board. When I first talked to the people in Richmond about the elected school board, they told me that it could be on a war basis, similar to what the City Council, how the City Council was elected. So I'm not sure exactly why we're doing this, but I can say that during the petition drive, the majority of people that I talked to wanted to have an awards, wanted an award system. You know, that was in all the different communities that I was in, and I actually was in every community. Myself, I liked the idea of having a at-large, and, because I think that would give people an opportunity from all sections of the city that are well-qualified to be on the school board. Some areas maybe, you know, have better qualified people than other areas. But if we do the at-large, then I think we really need to communicate to the minority communities that we have, you know, the reason why we're doing at-large and that they will be represented. I think that's the biggest part with this whole school board thing, is a lot of people felt as though they're not represented here in the city. So thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Peggy Scott, and I live at 8405 Freedon Street in Norfolk. Our city is split in wards and super wards, which has made it difficult at times for some council members to see the city as one large city, but the citizens need them to act as one and not be concerned with where the citizens live or if they are their constituents and voted for them in their ward. Our schools are not divided by wards, and in fact, many of our schools pull students from all sections of the city, not even taking into account the many out-of-district students that we have. With this in mind, I don't want the schools broken up by the existing wards, nor do I want everyone on the board to come from the same section of town. Our current board members are scattered from around town now. The city has never thought it important to pick people from wards. All those council member suggestions for board members have been taken into consideration. At the City Council meeting, Councilman Smigle suggested that we have elections by super wards and members at large, which has always worked well for the Virginia Beach school system. I would support such a system, because you don't have to look far to see the success it has brought our neighboring city. Open our city up to the best and the brightest. Don't limit the pool of candidates. We need to find the best candidates to elect to start to return our schools to the standards that we expect and deserve. We have and have had some great school board members who have worked tirelessly putting the students first as they develop policies that are in the best interests of the majority of the students, and we will need to continue to elect the best candidates that have a background in education and are familiar with VDOE policies and procedures and are willing to work with all the other elected city officials. We can bring greatness back to our schools, but it will take more than just an elected school. It will take the parents being involved in their children's education, whether by helping in the schools or helping your child with homework after school, or by setting a good example of citizenship for your child. We are all teachers. Children watch us every day, and they learn from us. This is a new opportunity to show our children how we can work together to come up with the best solution for our elected school board. If you disagree with the method that is finally chosen by our leaders, watch what you say in front of the students. Take the moment to teach them about compromise and let them know you will work with all the new school board members to make our schools the best they can be. Together, we will truly become the real cornerstone of a proudly diverse community. Thank you.
My name is Alice Allen Grimes, and I live at 1322 Mallory Court. I support Norfolk Gaines' recommendations regarding the elections for the school board. Gaines' only goal is to improve our schools for all of our students, and they have presented in their recent letter valid reasons for citywide representation versus voting by wards. The most important thing for you to do is take whatever steps are necessary to establish a process and have these elections at the earliest possible date without any delay. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Wendy White. I'm at 1417 Bowling Avenue. I'm the mother of two Norfolk Public School students. I have a junior in Maury High, and I have an eighth grader at Blair Middle School. And I come here tonight in support of Norfolk Gaines' proposal that an initial board elected at large would allow for the easiest transition to an elected school board. There has been scant time allotted for public hearing and debate, certainly not enough for citizens to form an educated position on which system, ward, at-large, or hybrid would be best for our students, and so going to an elected at-large school board, at least initially, would give us the time to do that type of debate and deliberation. This decision will have a tremendous impact on our schools and children. We should not rush to solidify our school board election system. Whatever the system is that we ultimately choose, it needs to ensure that the board will be as representative of the community as possible, the community that it serves. Diverse and broad representation is essential to good governance. Multiple perspectives are taken into account, and good decisions are made when there is a diverse and representative school board. So please do not make this decision without robust citizen input and adequate time for deliberation. Thank you.
Good evening to the City Council members. I'm John Wesley Hill. I stay at 2906 Maperton Avenue in Norfolk, Virginia. I am speaking on behalf of my organization, the Community Concerned Citizens Group, as well as I participated in Norfolk for about two-thirds of a century in the political process, and I'm hoping that this election of school board don't become a situation where we get involved in politics. The part of our constitution that deals with democracy is very important, that we do have a process that's a people process. I remember teaching school right here at Grammar High for several years. I taught out of a book that was entitled, "The Society is a Forever-Changing Place", and I'm hoping that society will change, because it's seemingly that most of us in Norfolk now are concerned about the school system, and we do want an at-large process. And the at-large process should work, because that's a process of the people and by the people. But I'm hoping that Norfolk is ready for the at-large process, because since I've been here, the at-large process got a little bit of stigma attached to it. So when you persons, our illustrious elected officials, that's going to lead us to get ready to make this reality, I hope hopefully that this at-large will work, because that seemingly is what most of the people want. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Richard James, and I live at 460 Peace Haven Drive in the city of Norfolk, Virginia. I am the Chairman of the Norfolk NAACP Legal Redress Team, and I'm here on behalf of our President, Mr. Dillard. I give you an overview of his letter, which referenced the elected school board, which you should have a copy of it before you. Before I begin, I'd like to say that with all the challenges we are facing here in the city of Norfolk and across the country, a child with the proper education, who can do something that the world wants done, in the end makes his way regardless of his race. So it is our desire that all students in Norfolk have access to equal and high-quality public education. As you already know, the Norfolk branch has always been a major leader and advocate for an elected school board. It is our suggestion that all school board members should be accountable to the voters of the entire city. Although we oppose having a school board elected from the same ward format as our current City Council, we do recommend that each board member have residencies in one of seven wards. This process would accomplish several goals. First, the school board would reflect the diversity of our city. Second, all seven seats would be voted upon by the entire voting population. And third, all elected members will be accountable to the best interests of all of our children. The Norfolk NAACP will continue to work with this Council and our fellow citizens to discuss the public school system that best serves the citizens of Norfolk, because in the end, it is our fiduciary responsibility to assure that each child have the proper education to make his or her way regardless of their race. Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor Frame, City Council, my name is Thomas Calhoun. I live at 5443 Waleka Road in Norfolk, Virginia. I am for at-large school board elections, but that's not really what I'm up here to talk about. I have some questions, really coming from your side of the table that I would just like to throw out. I know you can't answer them tonight, but questions I have was, who would be running from the school board in 2016? I mean, we've got to have somebody to run against. I was just wondering. And whoever's going to run from this current school board, how you going to select who that is?
Another question. Who's going to be reappointed in June of next year? I believe four school board seats are up, if I'm not mistaken. Those four people going to be appointed for three more years?
We can get that information.
Okay. Because, I mean, I know everybody's thinking about a ward, but it's two sides to the election. I'm concerned with who's going to be on this board, and I'll tell you why, Mayor. The election on November 4th was not just about elected school boards. We want to elect our school board members, but it was a rough one. When you get to 85 to 15, as a politician, you're aware, there's more to it than that. 85 to 15 means we have no confidence in the leadership or the direction of this current school board. And if you are going to put four of those members back on that school board for three years, well, what difference do it make who you elect in 2016? Those are the questions that I have, Mayor. I think it would be going against actually what we were trying to say on November 4th, if you put the same school board back up there for three years. So I hope it's at-large. If it's not at-large, a hybrid, I can live with that. Whatever the city is happy with, I can live with. What I can't live with is the fact that you all would just simply go against everything that we were trying to say on the 4th. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Yasmin Cooper. I live at 212 West 29th Street, Norfolk, 23504. At-large versus ward is where our attentions have been focused since the overwhelming 85% vote for elected school boards. But this debate is diverting our attention from the real question, who will be on the school board come June of 2015? Four of the seven members have terms ending in June 2015, while three will be ending in June 2017. Will three terms be cut a year short and four renewed until 2018? The November election did not only signify that the people of Norfolk want a voice in the school board, but more importantly, it showed that the people of Norfolk had little confidence in the leadership and direction of the current school board. At-large versus ward is a discussion that needs to happen, but right now, we need to know who will be on the school board in six months, which will have a significant impact on the 2016 election. We would like answers to these questions to avoid the perception of our rights being sidestepped. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and all. Many years ago, I've come to you and election of school board members. I've always said you all have appointed people that had not been involved in the city of Norfolk, that I had not ever seen participate with any of the schools of Norfolk, that we don't even know where they have come from. We need people who are involved in the children's life as well as the parents. As we went and gathered votes, it was pathetic to know some parents did not know what their voting rights were. We need to educate our parents, and we need people who want to, who do not need to be standoff, whether it be ward or whatever way. I believe that ward would be good, because that city council person and that school, city council and the school board person could work together, and it wouldn't be scattered. When you have people at-large, they're going every which way. When you have a certain focus group, you can holistic work together. And I believe working together within each city, and you can come together, but it's about the children and mainly about our parents, because our parents are not being educated for their children. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the fellow City Council people. I just got a couple of quick comments.
Mr. Forbes lives at 38th Street.
I live at 1220 West 38th Street in Norfolk, in Lamers Point. The petition that was circulated and signed by thirty, and voted upon by 35,000 people, they signed that petition with the inclination that would reference to an elected school board. And I think that an elected school board is what the voters asked for, and anything else would be to disenfranchise them. The second point of contention that I have is waiting up to 2016 for another election. Since you've got to go to the legislature anyway for an elected school board, why not go to the legislature at the same time, ask for a special election in 15, June 15, so that resolves the question of reappointing somebody for another term? Thank you.
Hello, Steve Tonelson. I live at 1347 Bowling Avenue. I don't think there's a more important decision that y'all are going to make about the city of Norfolk in the near future than what we're going to do and how we're going to elect our school board. I believe that it is an important enough decision that we should delay how we're going to do it and try to figure out what actually will work best, and not rush into the how, since it took us so long to even decide on the, do we want elected boards or not. I would offer up my support for at-large, depending on what a task force may find out, for a couple of reasons. First, if some of you may recall the MGT study, consultants were hired, came in for a couple of years, studied our schools, evaluated the condition and the academics in our schools, came up with a plan systematically to replace the older schools, which worked really well until it seems to me, my perspective, ward politics got in the way. And so we had this plan for all the students in the city of Norfolk, and various wards basically won out. So I fear that if we do a ward system. The second part of my fear for wards is that we have moved forward as a city and a citywide school system. We're now talking about magnet schools. We're talking about charter schools that would be citywide. The move is to allow choice within the city. It seems to me, given that direction, it would make far more sense to have an at-large elected board. I think that's all that I have that I really wanted to say, and I do appreciate the opportunity to speak, so thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Mayor Frame, Mr. Jones is not here, members of the City Council. My name is Angela Shalup. I reside in Norfolk and grew up in the Ward's Corner area. I'm confident that the city of Norfolk should have a school board member represent their school district to enable them to communicate about issues pertaining to their specific wards. I believe it will be more comfortable for individuals to call or meet with one person from the school district where they reside. At this time, the school board member can gather information to take back to the main school board meetings to strategize and better help their particular ward. Yes, our elected school board should ease residents' frustration with leadership at the school division, and if the public is not satisfied with their representation, they can hold the school board accountable. As an individual who collected signatures for, excuse me, as an individual who collected signatures for the elected school board from the public, I heard their comments of wanting to elect school board members who represent the schools, the neighborhoods, and their wards. They do not want to have at-large. But listening to everybody here, and listening, as I'm listening to everybody completely, and I'm looking at the whole, all three of these maps, for all the maps for super wards and the wards for everybody here, we, that's really, there's a lot, everything needs to be reviewed carefully before anything needs to be decided on. And I think that this is the best thing we've ever done with our city, and I respect and hope that you all's decision, whatever we choose, is going to be good. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable members of the Council. My name's Reverend Glenn Jones. I reside at 2501 Cannon Avenue in our great city. I first wanted to say I'm proud, because, see, I had three of my kids come through the Norfolk Public School systems. Two have gone on to college, and one coming from Gramby this year, heading to college. So things need to be worked out. But there, before I start, I want to think about a couple of things. In 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation was put together by Abraham Lincoln. It was a major piece of legislation, because it cleared the way from the old stuff that was happening and made a way for the new stuff. But a part of the Emancipation Proclamation that was presented to the floor was the point that everything starts over anew, and that's what we need to do. I heard a lot of things, Mr. Ross had great ideas. There's a lot of great ideas here, but we don't want to rush this. I gave my vote for this, and I want to feel, as a parent, who I'm seriously proud of Norfolk Public Schools, the bad criteria they get still, it's my school, and it's for us to deal with. I believe that it takes, needs more time, because there is going to be a call for special Those who are about to come up, it's up to you guys. You can decide on the special, when they come in, so, well, you're serving until this term possibility. You guys have a way of amending things. But I think it needs to be at-large. But I also want you to think about one thing also. If it is chosen at-large, that's why I think we need to have more conversations. We need to have time spans of who live, how you live in our city. One thing I've learned about through the elections, people will jump in from anywhere out of anywhere. The stipulations won't matter. A lot of people gave their vote. It was important to them. A lot of us did. A lot of us stand here because it's important to us today. But I ask Council to just hold up for a second. Let us talk about this a little bit longer, and then, whatever there be, we, they cannot say that this was something that was thrown on us. It can be said it has been talked out, and we've talked about it, and it shall be done, because I'm for at-large. Thank you, and everyone have a blessed day and a great holiday, and everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Hey, I'm Sarah Holcher. I live at 1356 Buck...
I live at thirteen fifty-six Buckingham Avenue. Um, I'm an NPS parent, and I'm a member of Norfolk Gains. And I've come out tonight to advocate for three things. First, I urge you to set initial elections for three members to the school board in May of two thousand sixteen, and then four members of the school board in May of two thousand eighteen. The fact that eighty-five percent of the voters in Norfolk have asked that the school board be elected in an, is an overwhelming mandate, and as state law dictates that the majority of board members must be elected at the same time that the majority of city council members are elected, three is the best that we can do for May of two thousand sixteen. To do otherwise is to deny the voters of Norfolk the overwhelming demand that they have made of you to alter the status quo on the school board and to allow their input in the selection process. Second, I urge that you set these initial two elections to be at-large. The current selection process for the school board is at-large, and state law urges that the initial elected school board be selected at-large if the appointed board is selected at-large. A conversion to wards during this initial election would allow for only two members elect, to be elected in May of two thousand sixteen. At-large elections allow for every voter to be a constituent of every candidate. At-large elections allow for candidates to consider the school system as a whole as it is, rather than a fractured political district. And at-large elections do not allow for political gerrymandering. Third, and finally, I urge you not to end discussions tonight. This is an important decision for our school system, and we need a school board that will boldly present budgets that represent the needs of the district. We need a school board that will set forth and enforce policies that ensure the opportunity for academic excellence to each and every child who attends Norfolk Public Schools. We need a school board that will respond to the concerns of parents, teachers, staff, and students. We need a school board that will demand accountability from our superintendent and his or her administration. We need a school board that will set strong policies regarding school facility conditions and required levels of maintenance. In order to ensure that we have an elected system, elective system, that will most enable our new school board to meet all of these challenges, I urge you to create a school board election task force of stakeholders from throughout the city to more fully discuss and analyze the best elective process for the school board. Once this task force has compiled a recommended system and presented it to you, then decide what method of school board selection is best for the children of Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
My name is Robert Brown, eighty-five oh-seven Troy Street. I was one of the organizers with Norfolk citizens for an elected school board, and I absolutely would advocate for an at-large system at this point. Our schools are broken. As you can see, with eighty-five percent, with the referendum passing with an eighty-five percent rate, we certainly need to move forward on fixing our schools. And I would be dismissed if to see two of the brightest people happened to live on the same block, and they wound up in a ward system. I think right now, we absolutely need to go to an at-large system, and I would advocate what our previous speaker from Gains, that we have a task force to study this, and you keep listening to us. Appreciate your time, and I look forward to having an elected school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, I want to thank everyone for, for coming out this evening. Uh, there were some excellent questions that were posed to us. The state code actually answers almost every one of them, and sets in place a process that the entire Commonwealth is followed with. This is unique to Norfolk, and it has been providing some great guidance for us as well. We'll try to, we'll try to get some of the questions, um, in a format where the city attorney can answer them, and try and get them up on the, on the website, and hopefully buy money, so you can have some idea. Okay, again, thank you very much. We've had a, a good discussion, Brian. Thank you.